With all the meeting to order, we are gathered today for a work session to discuss potentials for partnering with a vendor to review potential data as an input to our comprehensive plan. This is a working session for the council, so we've invited special guest Mary Boodle to speak on content that she has provided for us. We will not be entertaining public comment in this meeting, but at our regular scheduled meeting at seven, there will be a public comment opportunity for anyone who would like to address the council. With that, we'll begin with a roll call. Mayor McKee is not present. I am the dancing bear acting mayor for this evening, for now. Jeremy Nichols here.
Mark Landerman.
Michelle Friedrich here.
Dean Barrett Camp here.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, everyone. And with that, we will turn the matter over to staff to lead the discussion.
Yes, so council members, this evening what we have before us is an opportunity to discuss economic development in the community. We've been discussing it at lots of different sessions, and this opportunity came about in our collaborative partnerships with a concept plan that recently came forward to council with Continental. They proposed a residential development adjacent to County Road 30, and in that time, council had given some direction to them regarding commercial development in this mixed-use guided area. As we collaborated with them as staff, one of the things that they came up with was some challenges, both in terms of the market and what's happening in terms of where we're at in the phase of development. And as we had conversations, they engaged Maxfield Research is a partner to explore how they could address their situation and get better information. They brought forward that they were doing that. That sounded really interesting to me, and so staff sat down with them and had a conversation about what their plan was, and we recognized a potential opportunity beyond the scope of just this particular project and parcel to impact the whole city. And so Mary is a subject matter expert in this field. She has worked with a lot of cities on a lot of similar situations as they develop, and so we've invited her to share her insights from her profession and have discussion about how this impacts how we think about economic development and the staging of that, and potentially consider joining Continental in their research project in order to have positive impact on the economic development of our community. So, subject to your questions, I'd like to invite Mary to the microphone to share or really lead us through this discussion.
Thank you, Jake. So, acting mayor and council members, thank you for letting me be here this evening to address you and to present some information. Just, I would say, in general, some observations and then overall just a discussion or a little bit of a presentation about where we find ourselves today in the marketplace because of a number of different factors that have had significant impacts on the real estate market, both for the Twin Cities, for the western area in general, and I would just, I would also say to the nation. And some of those, well, a lot of those trends are not changing very quickly, and we're in a flux situation right now with a number of different uses, real estate uses and different types of development. So with that, I think, is someone going to, oh, you're going to. Thank you.
No, I got you.
Okay, thanks a lot. So, this map just really shows Corcoran's juxtaposition right now and its placement geographically as adjacent to Maple Grove. And I don't think that it's really any surprise to anyone that Maple Grove has had a relatively long run of where it's focused, a very substantial portion of land in development near the interstate towards primarily commercial and retail development. Back when they first started this, they, things started out, it started out, I would say, a little slowly, and then, of course, they ballooned during primarily the 2000s and 2010s. And now what's really happening kind of within this area is there's been some fallout in terms of commercial development and retail development, and the city is actually reevaluating how it may restructure certain parcels to be able to increase utilization of some underutilized commercial parcels. So, oh.
Mary?
Yes.
Over here, hi.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt. What do you mean by fallout?
Well, we're, well, I, I'll talk a little bit about that as we go through the slides, but just in general, what I'm saying is, is that we have certain retail centers are aging, certain retailers, largely big box retailers, are consolidating or closing altogether. There, and vacating spaces, so we have started to see increased vacancies. Some of those can be re or backfilled, but a lot of them cannot be right now, primarily because there isn't as much market activity in the larger big box area, and the cost to backfill some of those spaces are very high right now, and retailers are being very cautious. There, some, a lot, there's been a lot of store closings, they're focusing on locations that are optimal for them. There is some development. It's typically focused on very high concentrations of where there's already other retailers that they can play off of. So I guess that's kind of what I mean by that.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem. So let's go to the next slide. So this shows, we received this information from the city. I will say that because of certain, the way that they, we, the way the data comes off, and we didn't want to do a really significant deep dive into the permit evaluation at this time, so some of these, there are certain categories in here that may be overlapping based on the information that I had. So, as you can see, single-family development was overwhelmingly the vast majority, followed by townhome or attached housing. I don't see this as a big surprise. I mean, I think that definitely Corcoran is going to continue to develop residentially, probably the vast majority of its near-term development, I won't say far term, because I'll talk about that a little later, but near-term development is most likely to be residential in character, whether that's single-family development, whether it's townhome attached, or even up into a higher-density level, so a higher-density level. And that may include additional senior housing as well. So then, if we go to the next slide, this just looks at what the existing land use was in 2019, and then according to the comprehensive plan, the future land use. And so in the 2019 plan, again, we had quite a bit of gross acres and net acres given over to single-family development. We also had quite a bit of still agricultural and rural land area. And then I would say, looking at the future land use, of course, there are a lot more categories there. Just an observation, I was a little bit, well, I, in this category throughout 2040, I guess I was a little bit surprised about still such a very high percentage for rural residential, primarily because it seems as though Corcoran is growing very, very rapidly, and a lot of that rapid growth is most likely to be, there would be pressure to develop a lot of that rural residential land over into, I want to say, higher densities, but I don't necessarily mean high density when I say that. So it can be a low-density residential, and then a gradual increase, lower, mostly lower-medium-density residential, and then with specified areas targeted to other types of uses. I've, definitely, I think we're going to see more commercial development as the city grows because, because commercial development, both retail development primarily relies on rooftops and traffic, unfortunately, traffic, and other types of development such as the business or commercial would also rely somewhat on that, but primarily more along the lines of where, how they're going to draw the public force, and then the type of business that it is, do they need access to major traffic arteries, or do they need access to other types of development to support that? So we can go to the next slide. So this shows just a little bit about where we're at currently with office market activity. So in the Twin Cities, of course, well, throughout the country, since the pandemic and the back-to-work or the back-to-home and remote work situations, although companies are now trying to encourage their employees to come back into the office at least two or three days a week, we have had little to no growth in or absorption of our office space, and a lot of it that, once vacant, is struggling to rebuild. We have seen, I think, some, you know, there are a few locations, submarkets, where we've seen some return and some absorption, but it was modest. So overall, in the entire Twin Cities market, as of last quarter, we only had 7,300 square feet of space absorbed throughout the entire Twin Cities metro areas of markets, which is extremely low. I mean, even in our, we fluctuate back and forth, but even in our worst times, usually the suburban markets seem to uphold their own in terms of absorption, even when the downtown markets don't. But we're seeing suburban markets even be sorely tested in terms of occupancies. There is about 136,000 square feet under development in the southwest, and that's primarily medical office. So if we go to the next one. So this is a little bit about metro area retail vacancies. So it's, so are, I would say, strangely enough, we are strengthening in the retail sector overall, even despite some fluctuations back and forth between certain types of retail developments. So one of the strongest, I, as you can see here, one of the strongest segments is the strict retail or convenience retail segment, followed, and then general retail, which tends to be a single-use, some of the larger general merchandise retailers like Target, Walmart, Costco, those. Malls are struggling, of course, and some malls are being reconfigured, some malls, I guess we're hoping in the future, may be reconfigured. There are a couple of malls in the Twin Cities metro area that really, I would say, Eden Prairie has done a relatively good job at reconfiguring its regional mall, and then, but Birdsville is still struggling very significantly. And Mall of America, the largest mall in the country, actually seems to be doing pretty well. As I said, as I was talking about before, new development is relatively limited, so we're not seeing a lot of new development. We do have significant vacancy increases, not so much in our suburban locations, but we have quite a bit in our downtowns. So our two downtowns are struggling significantly. Suburbs are, there are pockets, and largely they tend to be mostly in centers that are older and have, are larger centers and that are looking to restructure some of their tenants. So retailers with growth plans, again, continue to target high-traffic suburban growth orders, and demand is strongest in smaller format spaces, so spaces that are under 10,000 square feet. So we used to have a significant push for those larger kind of mid-market segments called the big box, but now those really are starting to go away, and we're actually seeing some of those spaces, those vacant spaces, being resegmented into smaller spaces, again, those under the 10,000 square foot range. We'll go on to the next slide. So for-sale residential market activity, so I would say, absent the fact that we have slightly higher mortgage interest rates and our prices continue to climb, our for-sale market would have much better activity than it has been recently. Once interest rates go down, and I would say that this segment will be one of the first to show a lot more market activity, and buyers will be back into the market. Unfortunately, I guess we can't necessarily or haven't been able to stop the price increases, so price increases have continued to ratchet up, and that's all across the country. I don't really see almost any, any market in the entire country that has had price deflation in its home market, so. We can go on to the next one. Oh, there was one thing more I wanted to say. We are still, in terms of homes available on the market, we are still vastly under-supplied. So, as you can see, months of supply is well under that six-month balance market. That's been the case for probably the past eight years since we actually came out of the Great Recession.
Mary?
Yes?
Any, this is Dean.
Yeah.
Any idea why? I mean, are we having that many more people move into the Twin Cities from outside, or we just have people growing up and they want to get out of the house and they need houses? What's the problem?
Well, so there's a number of factors. So what happened during the Great Recession is building, because we overbuilt, building essentially stopped, and for about two or three years, we really weren't building almost anything. And then we did have, as the economy started to recover, we did have that big segment of the demographic market move out of their parents' homes and into the workplace, and jobs were plentiful. And so they moved into the job market, and they moved in in significant numbers. So that demographic group that was quite large suddenly did move into the employment market, and they started to move into the housing market, but because of prices, we didn't, as prices started to move, we didn't have enough low-cost housing. And traditionally, when they first moved into the market, they usually moved into the rental market. I mean, the baby boomers did that.
Yeah.
And we saw a huge building boom of rental apartments for baby boomers, and then they gradually moved into the for-sale market. So as prices have ratcheted up so dramatically in the for-sale market, and we did not keep up with the supply, and we also had baby boomers at that point, too, moving up. So there were two large demographic groups that were putting significant pressure on the for-sale market, just both at the same time. And then we started building rental units, and now with the increase in the housing prices, which wage rates have not kept up with price inflation there, so now the younger demographic has been staying in that rental market for longer than it normally should. So that's kind of the short explanation. And then, and seniors, even though we've, we've lagged behind building senior housing, but a lot of seniors don't want to move, so they've been staying in their homes longer. And so that's also, we're not seeing quite as many of those people move into the kind of more traditional senior housing. So now we're starting to see developers consider more that active adult type of apartment.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Yep, so this is a little bit of information on the multifamily market activity. So the market absorbed about 2,000 units in quarter 2025. It was the second consecutive quarter of positive absorption, signaling continued healthy renter demand. Deliveries, however, are slowing, so we are not seeing as many units planned to be put into the market. So what that is going to mean is we're going to continue to see a reduced vacancy rates. We are already at a balanced rental market, but in certain areas, we'll more than likely continue to see some lowering of vacancy rates. And also, I wanted to say that in the downtowns, we actually have the highest vacancy rates, but those are starting to stabilize as well. Suburban locations continue to be very, very strong in terms of rental demand. Rent growth continues. The concessions, there really hasn't been a lot of concessions in the market in terms of suburban locations. Mostly that has occurred in the two downtowns, and those are starting to pay off, too. We're not looking at significant increase in deliveries, probably for at least the next couple of years until interest rates start to come down. So I think just a few kind of key takeaways. So residential development continues to overshadow all other real estate sectors. Multifamily urban, urban development is still in demand, although deliveries will be significantly reduced due to financing challenges. Single-family detached and detached prices both continue to rise. Inventories have increased slightly. Mortgage interest rates have moderated but still remain high, continuing to challenge entry-level and lower and middle-market buyers. Industrial demand lagged in first quarter of 2025 with absorption down from 2024. So it is limited speculative development. It means that most spaces are even targeted for specific users. So we are seeing industrial, so we are seeing industrial demand. There is, of course, been a big push mostly towards interstate locations for, again, warehouse and distribution facilities. We are, however, seeing single-pendant industrial demand as well as some limited office or house demand from smaller units, users, and we are seeing a couple of types of development being considered that would be incubator space for businesses that are trying to get off the ground. Retail demand remains strong. Vacancies decrease slightly again, but there are some persistent challenges that remain with big-box users and reuse of larger vacant spaces in retail centers. And that was before, that's before we know what this impact may be from tariffs. Offices showing slight improvement. There is some stability in suburban markets where we do have some of these renewals. Vacancies still do remain high, however, and absorption is still negative in many, many smaller submarkets. Smaller medical office still pass through. And that's really quite preliminary, and then I have just had a little bit of additional reading power. So I'm happy to have a discussion and talk about anything.
So Mary, I think one of the big things to start off the discussion is, as we talk to the community, I mean, we just recently had Night to Unite, and I know that in my conversation with some residents, there's this strong desire to have commercial here yesterday, and then you just showed us some data. So could you help us crystal ball or however you, timeline-wise, with our present growth, how do you see commercial happening in the community? Because you alluded to the idea that it will happen and a timeline, but for expectation management, what would you project that timeline to be?
So, new commercial will want to go in areas that, number one, already have some consistent commercial that are in high-traffic, higher-traffic areas and are situated in close proximity to a lot of the hubs. So those are kind of, in general, those are kind of the rough three big things that most, and most retailers will go. So they want, they want to be near kind of light retail so that some, I won't say all users, but some users can then spin off, there'll be demand for their retail that's been off from others. So, and when I say that, that usually happens with restaurants. It usually happens with, so grocers. It usually happens with hardware. It'll happen with certainly gas stations. So those types of users, we tend to look at them as either neighborhood or convenience types of users, are usually the ones that will come first, and they, those are the ones that tend primarily to serve the local market and serve them, because those are the ones that people generally want to travel the least distance to get to and travel frequently because they have daily needs. So those are the, that's the type of retail that we usually see them first. Now, there's some, you know, potential differences depending on, you know, where there are areas that are, can be zoned for that. I know we had a discussion earlier talking about grocers. So we are seeing, because of the situation that is occurring in our economy right now, we are seeing some, it's not fallout, but we're seeing some pullback in the market in terms of new grocery. There's some longstanding grocers that are pulling back in terms of closing, actually closing stores, and the margins have continued to shrink in terms of grocery, and so grocers are being very cautious about new development. So we've even had, so a couple of grocers that were really bullish on the downtown, so there was a grocer that actually just went into, well, went in several years ago to downtown St. Paul, and now they've closed that store. We're still hoping that we can keep all of our grocers in downtown Minneapolis, but I noticed that, you know, they've also started, well, different grocers have started to, I guess, how can I say this? It's, I've noticed how some of the grocers have actually changed their attitude when you walk in the store. So they're so much more friendly, they, can I help you with anything? What are you looking for today? Which signals to me that they're not getting as much traffic as they did before. So, and, and those, those actually are some of our longstanding grocery outlets, and consumers are, consumers, once the economy improves, I think consumers will go back to some of those outlets, but right now, we're seeing huge increases in demand for grocers that are offering lower-priced products. So even Pub Foods is a little higher, so you will see big pushes that Costco, Trader Joe's, Target, so people switching their grocery buying to some of those lower-class outlets. We're still seeing reasonable growth, I would say, in terms of, well, the restaurant market is, we're seeing some growth and still in franchises. So the franchise outlets, we're seeing them maybe reposition their locations or choose, you know, be very or choose, you know, be very specific about where they go. But the restaurant market, their biggest challenge right now is later. And, and the cost, the pasta food. And we're seeing consumers, again, the biggest growth in restaurants is in that middle market, so mid casual. So not so much fast food. Stronger growth in mid casual and lesser unoffered restaurant areas.
So, so what I heard you say, and, and going back, is a, a couple of things. We, we had had a conversation about the desires I've heard from residents for grocery here in the community. And what I just heard you say is, right now in the market, that would potentially be challenging with the volume of groceries that we have adjacent to us and the neighboring community. And then what is more likely for expectation management is those types of convenience or this mid-market type of restaurant. That, that's probably the target that would be interested in the volume of housing that we have and then, and then the traffic patterns that we have that are increasing dramatically. Whereas some of the other retail would be more attracted to a higher other like retail that's not too far from us, that you showed on that first slide, because of its adjacency to ninety-four and, and then the volume of those. Is that a fair summary?
Yes, I think that's fair. But you also have areas, well, you have a small concentration of retail. It would be, I think, good to try and expand some of that in areas where it's just immediately adjacent. So not necessarily away from that. So if there were, if there was a way to, you know, add on areas that could accommodate that, like right very close to that, that would be helpful.
Could we bring up one of our maps that shows like where our commercial and where our industrial are located?
Where existing is located or where things are.
Existing, existing.
I don't know that we have a map for the existing areas in Hennepin County. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring that up.
While they're looking at that, our logistics, we don't have main roads. We have county roads running through our little community. We've got new residents moving into our community because of the rural setting. But then their expectations are, they want more conveniences, but not in their backyard. So where do you put those? How do you balance? How do you do, you know what I'm trying to say, I hope?
No, I do know what you're trying to say. And it's not, it's not unusual. That's not unusual. I've seen that many, many times. It's, it's challenging. So it's challenging to try and give people the best of both worlds. And so at, so at some point, there has to be, I think, kind of a little bit of a give and take. Because if you, if they're willing to just drive elsewhere.
Well, that's, that's my direction. If you want that, you're four miles away from it. And then I get, well, you get, you gotta fix that. We don't want to drive.
We don't want to drive.
And then a little bit further, my, my way of thinking is, we have a blank slate. And when I read your presentation, just got done listening to what you have to say, and something that I've thought for a long time, and you're talking to somebody that lives on the rural side of town, and let's do everything on the east side so it doesn't come out the west. For us to attract retail, for us to attract commercial and even some more industrial, we're gonna have to put up rooftops. This is kind of what I'm hearing. We gotta, what comes first, chicken or the egg? In this case, it's going to be residential, it sounds like. But a lot of our development and a lot of our requirements are on our mixed use. They gotta come in with a design plan of fifty fifty or sixty forty, sixty percent residential, forty percent commercial. What am I, help me Natalie, if you would, on, on mixed use.
So our mixed use areas were our strategic areas along what we, what are essentially our, our arteries of the city. And so the mixed use areas, it's supposed to be roughly fifty percent residential, fifty percent commercial in terms of the net land. So I, yeah, I think that that is accurate.
But, but we're, we're kind of saying you can't do anything unless both come at the same time right now.
That was the direction provided, but there's not necessarily something in code. But I do think we want, what we are, what we should ask for is for some plan for that commercial area. It might be that we don't have users. It might be that it's not gonna happen right away.
You're, you're going right to where I want you to. But then we build a residential and all those people don't want the commercial there. Nobody told me commercial was going there. And then we all catch hell, excuse my French. But again, we're about to not in my backyard. Figure out someplace else to do it. And I think that's something where we may not be reasonable. And when I say we, that's the residents of our city and us up here of, no, we want the best of both worlds. We want to build them at the same time. So we don't have to explain to these folks, this is coming five years later, ten years later, whatever. We've gotta do something better at that, yes or no?
Well, I mean, so I, I, I do hear you.
Yeah.
It's called nimbyism. It's, it's, it's something that's been around for a long time. And the reality is, someone is eventually going to have a, a commercial or industrial area in their backyard. Eventually, there's going to be an area, a, a part of the residential area that abuts that. There, unless you put like a park in the middle, but do you want a park that abuts an industrial area? That might not make sense.
Definitely.
So it, there, I think we've done a lot as a city to try to create buffers in our ordinances to, especially if there is something that abuts residential to an industrial area. And then we've kind, and that's how we've kind of tried to solve that issue. But you're never going to get away from that, and you're never gonna get away from neighbors being upset that they feel they weren't fully informed. I do think as a city, we do do our best to try to make sure that.
I think, I think you do a great job. I think our, our comp plan and everything we do.
As well as in trying to explain that to people. So I do think we are available to answer those questions for those who are curious about it. But you're always gonna have some people that move into the community that didn't do any research. So they're gonna be feel very blindsided. But we can't do anything about people that didn't reach out to understand what was going to be in that area before they made that purchasing decision. So, and you, but you do get that. You get people who just kind of figure, oh, that'll stay the same, and it's an unrealistic expectation.
We get a lot of it.
Or, or there's an enthusiasm that I, that I don't want to discount, you know? So someone's new, they're buying a new home, and, and since I've been here, we've had this conversation many times, where on their plat, it's very clear that this trail is going to go in their backyard. So, so trails is another example. And so, so now the home's built, they're getting ready to put the deck on, the deck's on, and now they're building the trail, and they're like, wait a second, I had no idea this trail. And then they come here to the open forum, and they're really upset that this trail is gonna be so close to their new deck. They don't really have plausible deniability, because as I show them the plans, this was on the plans when you bought the house.
Right.
I'm sorry that you missed the details of that. One of the challenges that we have, and I certainly encountered this when I was in Shakopee, is we had all of these gaps in trails, and now it's time to build them, is we have to stand to our plan. Because when we compromise and we say, oh, they're really upset, we don't want to do that because we don't want to deal with them being upset, then it never happens. And we have, in this case, a gap in the trail. Or in development, we have what was supposed to come in at this time for a commercial development. We missed the restaurant because somebody has decided they don't want it in their backyard. And, and so I, I guess the, the underlying thing is, is we need to continue to do the good job to make sure it's on the plans. We've communicated the plans. Everybody understands the plans. But we also need to understand that just because they should have the information, when it comes time to execute the plans, there's still gonna be a lot of people that are upset with the plans.
And we, we've got a significant number of people that have lived in our community a very long time will come and say, when was that thought up? That was thought up in.
Thirty years ago.
Nineteen ninety-eight, if I use the Hope Church corner.
Yep.
I mean, that's twenty-five years of planning, and everybody around them, what do you mean? You're just pulling that out now? No, it's been there for a long time, and they still don't even listen to reason. And it's not just a onesie twosie, it's a lot of folks. So it, it's frustrating the setup here. And I, Natalie, you said it very well. We are doing a very good job of planning. The city, previous councils, mayors have done a lot of good things. Administration have done a lot of good things. The roadmap is there. But boy, there sure is an awful lot of silly out there.
Well, and I, I'm always curious as to how we can improve our communication.
Yeah.
The way I was talking about trying to do some kind of a story map, because the story map seemed to be a very popular way to get some other information out so that our comp plan is a little bit more usable. Because it's, right now, it's like a four hundred page document. I can't remember exactly how much it is. But that's not very usable for the common person. So how can we make it more?
Look at our newsletter. Eighteen pages is this last one? I had one person walk up to be Night to Unite. How do I find out what's going on in our city? I said, do you get the newsletter? What newsletter? Where do you live? How long have you lived there? You get that newsletter. Well, I just see it as propaganda and throw it away. That is the ultimate in our communication from our administration, all of you, all of you guys. I even get my wife sometimes, what are they doing with that? Did you read the newsletter that we just got three weeks ago? Read that and then come tell me. Well, now I know what's going on. So I mean, there's so much frustration. We have so much communication out there. What are we missing?
Speaking of communication, I think Michelle would like to say something.
It don't matter. Thank you.
I was just gonna mention that I think our city has changed a lot from the last time we reviewed the comp plan. And so with what you're saying is, more commercial and retail should be along a, an area or a road or a county road that gets more traffic. So with six-ten coming in, our County Road one oh one is gonna become much busier, and County Road thirty is, which is what we were talking about with that piece that, that the presentation came in on with the fifty-fifty split and trying to determine where the housing would go, where the retail area could go. And so it makes more sense to me now, even with what we suggested, that makes even more sense because you're tucking your houses back in and putting your retail in more visible lines.
I think the other thing to, to remember is, and, and communities work very, very hard on the comprehensive plan. And it, the fact that we have a comprehensive plan or a comprehensive plan process here in Minnesota, I think overall does make our communities, you know, very, what's the word I'm looking for? I, I think we have really nice communities because of it versus other, some other locations where you drive along, in other states pretty much, where you drive along and they just have, you know, a house, and then they have a restaurant right next to it. And then, I mean, they don't get any say. I mean, it's pretty much one thing after another. And lots of times, you don't even have to go through a review process to pull a permit. But I, I would say too, one of the challenges with some of our comprehensive planning is that we have these plans, but then the real estate market shifts or it goes through cycles and phases. And we can't always, our comprehensive plan can't always just adhere like identically to what we planned several years ago. And we have to have a little bit of flexibility to determine how we can be flexible to still kind of identify what we, how we want to shape our community. But maybe we have to make some adjustments. And I've seen that all over.
That's, that's a really helpful segue, Mary, because one of the questions that we were hoping to talk about here with council is, we are gonna be starting the comprehensive plan. And one of the reasons we asked Mary to come here is, we do see the value. The, the economic development assessment that informed the last comprehensive plan was conducted in two thousand and eight. And so it seems apropos for us to update our research. It's gonna inform the comprehensive plan. The, the challenge that we have in that is twofold. It's not typically a part, it's, it's not always a part of the comprehensive plan. I think it's wise for us to consider having it part of our comprehensive plan. And then, as we do that, when do you do it? It seems before we start our other comprehensive. So the timing of this seems really good. The question is, what is the scope of it? So we've had Continental come in as this opportunity for a parcel. We have corridors that we've talked about for consideration in the past along the thirty corridor. Another way that we could consider this is, we just look at certain guided properties as it stands right now. If, if we looked at corridors, that would look at whatever properties, regardless of how they're guided in that corridor, and reconsidering them. So, so there's a, a lot of different ways that we could do it. And one of the things that I would hope to get some guidance from council is, this seems like a good opportunity for us. Does this also seem like a good opportunity to council for us to partner with Mary on this? And to, to what scope or to what end would we partner?
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
I also think that undertaking a process like this, I think it would be good to, to kind of combine that process with an economic development strategy for the city. So it's, and that's a little bit of a different, I think, approach. But I've seen a number of different cities recently look, wanting to look at how growth and development in their communities kind of dovetails with this kind of overarching economic development strategy and what components of that should there be in that strategy to go along with like the comprehensive plan and just regular, just regular growth. And sometimes it might be, how can we, it, it covers new development, but it also covers redevelopment, which I think is also important. Even though Porcarian has a lot of land, I think that it's important to also consider that there may be some locations that are ripe for redevelopment, even though that they may be few.
So, so an unfair question of you then, Mary, having not been familiar with the economic development strategy as you're proposing. And, and as we're kind of on the, could you tell us how much a market like that would be for not to exceed? You know, because we are in budget season two, and I don't currently have this.
No, so I think in all fairness, what I would like to do, I think, is, I would like to just be able to get back to you on that.
Fair, yeah.
Maybe like an outline and some options and.
Yeah, that would be really helpful to help bracket.
I think that's the best.
And, and, because, because then we could come to council and say, here's the scope of what's possible, what's feasible in terms of budget, and also what, what accomplishes the objectives that council desires.
Yeah, and I think that's important too, because then you can kind of target certain things for what you think you really do need.
So another underlying need for us beyond the comprehensive plan is, council, you've, you've had community development working on a commercial industrial update. We've put that on pause because we wanted to hear how this conversation. It seems like Mary's proposal could be really helpful for a commercial industrial update. So there's, there's multiple layers of benefit in some initiatives that we've taken as staff, if that's something that you want us to do. So I, I keep talking, I need to get some feedback. So I wanted to give a little feedback on, I think we're still missing one significant piece. I, I agree with comments that it's been a long time since the comp plan was created. I think there was a lot of good intent and thought that went into it. I also think there's a lot of flaws in it. I think one of those major flaws is the intermingling of adjacent zones that don't really naturally mesh well and the lack of a logical progression of density down from a commercial industrial core area. And I think we've tried to bandage that with our efforts around how do we create these buffer areas between adjacent zones of different density. But ideally, you would need less of those if you have a more stepped down density map for the vision of the city. I also think a missing piece is, what are the unit economics for the different zones that we can apply? So every acre of housing at a certain density generates a certain amount of revenue and creates a certain amount of cost. And we don't know what those values are. We don't know that value for commercial. We don't know it for industrial. And so when we show that table of different zoning guidances, I know that was created with a lot of forethought and the vested intentions, but I don't know that there's an economic grounding in it for why those percentages are what they are. I know there's a widespread belief that we get more revenue and incur less cost for industrial and commercial, but I've never seen that.
but I've never seen that borne out in detail. And I think if we're going to make trade-off decisions on zoning types in the future as we do the next round of the comp plan, having that kind of economic grounding is gonna be at least as important as what we're talking about today for what we can expect the market to give us the opportunity to attract over that time period. And so, this might be a necessary step. I don't think it's a sufficient step by itself to let us make those longer-range plans.
For expectation management, if you remember, we have Northland doing some analysis on the economic impact, but it's not gonna be to the degree that you just discussed because it's within the scope of the normal work that they do with a long-term plan. So, the benefit to that is, is it's not a lot of increased costs, but it's just beginning to nibble at the apple. So, it's, it's not gonna give us the depth and breadth of information that's gonna drive these longest-range decisions. And as always, fiscal disparities is, is a challenge within that equation that makes it difficult here in Minnesota to, as, as you're, you're being the best stewards, intentionally developing your community, and then you watch those tax dollars go to help somebody else who is less intentional. It's very frustrating.
And so, if, if that's our fate, if we continue on the path that we have, maybe we wanna rebalance some of those. Because there is this inherent tension between our vision for the city and the level of industrial and commercial that we end up with. So, we have to be intentional on how we make that decision. And if we're missing the data to support it, we may find that we're better off with much more residential and less commercial industrial. It's also possible, the opposite is true. We just don't know how to make that decision.
To, to that point too, Jeremy, though, we need to dovetail that with all of our school districts too. If it was to turn out to be more residential and stuff, what happens for schools? 'Cause we don't have a school.
And fire service changes?
Yeah, everything dovetails with this, so it's just, it's crazy.
Transportation corridors?
And one additional complication is there has been proposals recently to remove fiscal disparities. And so, that would be a whole different game if that were to move forward. Not that, it did move forward this last year, but as we see, sometimes things just keep popping back up.
I'm sure. Who is the motivating force behind that idea?
You know, I just had it up, close the tab. Wait one second, let me reopen it. You know, I will, I'll be back to you on that. I will pull it up. It looks like it was a sponsor, was a Democrat, Senator Grant, House, House child? A house child?
I would imagine people with a lot of commercial industrial would want to see that that way.
So, in terms of discussion and as, as we're hitting the end of the window, is there, are there any other recommendations from council or feedback from council?
I have a quick question. At what point would it be beneficial for us to have like an economic development authority? Like a separate entity? I know council has acted that in capacity, in that capacity in the past. But if it's as big of a large discussion, I'm just wondering, like what point would that be something that you would wanna set up in a city?
So, so we do have one.
Right, the council acts as that.
It just isn't active at this point. So, it has been activated. Natalie was actually in a role in that, right?
Yeah, we were never, it's, so my understanding is, we have an EDA. It, so we do have an active EDA, in theory, it's just we don't have really a plan. So, I, I, I actually, the proposal to get a bit, much better of an economic development strategy in place, I think that, that could definitely be a topic. But typically EDAs, they're going to be looking at providing, you know, low, low-interest loans for businesses, for different programs, and there just hasn't been a desire to really do that. That's why we don't really have a active EDA, but we do have an active EDA.
Yeah.
There's also not a funding mechanism for it. So, that might be the primary first step. Probably not going to be a ton of appetite to increase levy to create funding for the EDA. But if there was a funding mechanism independent that gave us the opportunity to do things, it might be.
So, so currently, some of the functions that you'd expect from the EDA are through collaborative partnership with the I-94 chamber. We don't have a chamber either. But in terms of those connections, that information, and then externally Minnesota Deed, we're working with them routinely. But we get these, hey, we're looking for this really great, and I'm like, yeah, not here. Any other feedback from council? So, at this point, my takeaway is to, to move forward and collaborate with Mary. She will provide some feedback on what some options are for us to identify scope and potential price points that we'll bring back to council for future decision. And any other feedback from you, Mary? Any other comments?
Not, not I think so. It was a very enjoyable discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your insights. It was great to hear from you.
Thank you, Mary.
With that, I will entertain the motion to adjourn the work session.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Very good. All those opposed, sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion passes.
Four zero, we are adjourned. Thank you.